Meeting is table, please join us with the best time we need.
Mahalo everyone, thank you and.
I guess Dean's with us.
Waihaua with our members, everyone board member. Twenty-six is open at seven oh four P M. We do apologize for the slight delay of tonight's meeting start. We are now going to start with a roll call.
When I call your name, please state that you're present. T J? Present. Joel?
Present.
Present. Dean?
Present.
Present, thank you. And then Sylvia? Erin? Erin? Matthew? Present. Michelle? Present. June?
Yeah.
Present. And then Jeannie? Present. Okay, with that, let me check. We have seven board members present, we do need to call.
Thank you very much. Moving to agenda item number two, our first responder monthly reports, I'd like to call up fire department if anyone is here. And seeing none, calling up our police department.
Madam Chairpoint of Information, please.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to take a request that the board take a moment of silence to honor the fallen firefighter father and person who died at that horrific attempted assassination of our president, former president. If the board would approve this motion, I would appreciate that, we notice the flags of the firehouses are all flying half staffed to honor their firefighter brother in blue.
Okay, stand by, I'm gonna do a real quick check with our board, stand by. Board members, we do have a request for a motion to do a moment of silence for a fallen firefighter on the mainland which happened recently in the news, any objections?
No. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, HPD, if you indulge us for one minute. Dean, would you like to make, say, say a few words and we'll give a one minute moment of silence?
Well, I can just only imagine what the family's going through, but being a fellow first responder, I totally understand where our brothers in blue locally are coming from and how they must feel. Of course, the firefighter was off duty, but he did even in his off duty time, attempt to protect his family, which is the most important thing in his life, giving the ultimate sacrifice. So I would just like to say thank you and mahalo Kehua.
Thank you, Dean, and our moment of silence.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, everyone, for participating in that moment of silence, we appreciate everyone's thoughts and prayers for the family of the fallen firefighter, mahalo Dean. Keep calling up HPD.
Hello and good evening, Lieutenant Romel Baisam, the current watch commander for the day. Reporting stats for the Waihaua sector, we had four assaults, one burglary, and twenty-four motor vehicle collisions, three robberies and one U M V, and this is in the period of July first to the fifteenth. I'd like to share a safety tip, school's gonna come back in session soon, so if we can please prepare our children, don't talk to strangers, define what a stranger is and be careful of, beware of people who are stopping by them and asking them for any type of items or, or offering them items and offering them rights. Another thing is recently it came about that there's people selling fake jewelries on the street, so if it's too good to be true, it probably is, so jewelry is probably fake or stolen, so be careful, be wary of that. Thank you. I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead.
The, the four assaults, are they all isolated or they occur in one location or what?
No, it's, it's within the, the district or within the sector of Waihaua.
It's not all one, one location, no?
No, sir.
Thank you, June, and any other questions from the board? Go ahead.
For the, the vehicle collisions, what, what type of collisions are they? Like what, like in general, is there like a certain type that's that fault, like are they kind of like pulling out and like T boning or just, just curious if you have an idea?
Right, I'm sorry, twenty-four of them, they range from anywhere from just rear end, T bone, I mean, you name it, anywhere from a minor collision, which we define as less than three thousand dollars worth of damage total, to a major which is over three thousand or if there's injury involved. So I don't have a breakdown of what's what, but yeah, we have about twenty-four of them, which is kind of, kind of common actually. Yeah, thank you, thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community, virtually, I see Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, also LT, thank you very much for yesterday's participation in Tamayo Perry's paddle out and HPD did an awesome job, you were there in full force and truly, truly gave a heartfelt aloha from our first responder team. So I just wanted to mention that, also, I should have thought about it too, but I wanted to include Tamayo in that the moment of silence, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dean, any other questions from anyone virtually for our HPD? Okay, hearing none, I do have a, oh, I'm sorry, okay, I do have one question that I received from a community member wanting to know the status of the fire that happened on Koah Street, it was a dwelling that, you know, I think it happened a couple of days ago.
Right, as far as?
Yeah, three o'clock in the morning or something?
Right, as far as I know, it's under investigation, I'm not sure what the, you have any information on it? No, sorry ma'am, yeah, I don't have all the information on it.
Okay.
But usually fire would be the, fire investigators would be the people to ask.
Yeah, that's.
And this is a criminal case, then it becomes HPD's jurisdiction.
Correct, but do you know if anyone was injured in that one, was there any reports?
I can't, I don't know.
You don't know, okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the community here? Okay, happy hearing none, thank you very much, thank you for your service. Oh, hold on, standby, yes. Could you, could you stand up and, and state your name?
Philip Riley. Bringing it up with Amy.
Yes, sir, sorry, that's a question for DOT, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, HPD. Keep moving on to our next section, which is section three, and this is just a review that we do traditionally, and it is the election of officers and confirmation of board details. So if I can have a motion to keep everything the same for the next year, which is, which includes our starting time, our meeting date, so it'll be on the third Mondays of the month, the time to start will be at seven P M, the location would be here at Halekoah. The Risa dates are the months of April, August and December. Rules of part participation for speakers and videotaping of boards will continue, if I have a motion by the board, yep, all in favor? Do, oh, I'm sorry, do you? Oh, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we're good? Yep, okay, we're good, so we'll continue for the next year with the same schedule, dates, times, et cetera. At this time, I would like to ask the board for an approval to move one item above, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, I'm, so we need, okay, I do apologize, oh, no, that's right. I do apologize, we are still back on section three, we also need to, I didn't notate it, but we also need to get approval to keep everyone in their current positions, that would be for the office of chair, the vice chair and the secretary. Do I have a motion to keep those positions in place for the next year?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much, okay, we got. Thank you, we've covered everything. I do want to, I do ask the board for indulgence to move one item up. We do have Robin from Queens who is able to join us for a few minutes, if we can move her up to give her update on the Queens Waihaua facility, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Robin, can you join us now?
Yes, thank you so much for having me, just wanted to give the board just a little bit of an update on since we opened on May thirtieth, where we're at. So that first two days, we saw sixty-three patients that, between the two days, and from then until now, we have saw two thousand two hundred and eighty patients coming through the emergency department. I'm, a lot of concern I think was about patients that were gonna need to be admitted, and so about seven percent of the patients that come in are either getting transported to one of the Queens facilities, either in the West Campus or Mana Mana, and the remainders are going to either Kapialani or Polimomi or Kaiser if that's their destination. I think overall it's going really well, the first couple of weeks, we didn't have EMS coming through, I'm wanting to make sure that everyone was set up for success, and then once they came through, we're seeing about an average between thirteen to fifteen ambulances that are coming in, so that's really great for the community. Not sure if you had any other questions, just really wanted to let the board know that we definitely, as soon as we opened the doors, patients were starting to come in, the clinical team is doing fantastic, so really fortunate to have some of the existing staff that was formerly up there and some, a couple of new ones added to the mix, so overall it's doing really well, but hopefully any questions you may have for me?
Yeah, actually before everyone, I just want to relay the questions that I received via email and phone calls. Inside the facility, what was everything renovated inside and what other support services are there, like is there imaging or what else is happening besides patients going into ER room?
So it's standalone emergency room, we do have a CAT scan, that's a portable one outside near the ambulance bay insurance. We will be moving that in, we're going into permitting and design for that, to bring that within the, the facility walls and do plate film, imaging, we have laboratory and pharmacy, all there what they would need for emerging care.
Okay, thank you very much, let me, board members, any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I wondered if somebody has been to a Queens facility before, Queens Hospital before, and they go to the Queens Waihaua, are their records accessible?
Yes, they are, so part of the upgrade and the transition was moving the prior facility over to Epic MyChart platform, so they'll be able to see everything and, and for the community, if they go on their smartphones or they can download the MyChart and they can see all their previous and their current, and now all of that information comes real time, so sometimes while you're sitting, after you've had X-ray done, you actually just see the imaging going at the same time the refill as a physician, so it's definitely at your fingertips now.
Previous records are not. Queens refused to take them.
On your mic to begin your.
In reference to previous records or medical records for any patients?
Yeah, not the previous, that was in my, the previous Waihaua E M R, that was, I thought her question was if they went to another Queens facility, if that would be able to be seen. But yeah, I kind of heard that, yeah, we didn't, we didn't retain the medical records when the transition happened.
Yes. My other comment was congratulations to Jason Chang.
Oh, thank you for that, he's, the, he was transitioned on Friday to our CEO. He has been involved in a lot of, he's done with the Queens Health System for several, several years, so we will be in good hands, thank you.
And I do have a couple more questions, board members, any questions before I have a couple more, okay, go ahead, TJ?
By the way, yeah, congratulations on your opening, I've been getting lots and lots of feedback from our community, especially the ones that are most vulnerable, a lot of them have been seen already at your facility, but I wanted to go back to what they were saying about patient records not being accessible, or are they not being available if they were serviced through Waihaua General prior to Queens taking over?
They are or will be accessible, but not through Queens. The Waihaua General Hospital, which was dissolved, we formed a trust, that trust will be maintaining the records and making them available as required. That's a ruling from the Office of Community Health.
Thank you for that, very good information, and Robin, do you concur with that, was that statement correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you very much for both of you for providing information.
Actually, Chair, I just wanted to follow up, so Robin, if there is a question of Medicaid fraud and there's an investigation that will be going on, to whom will the investigators be directed to? Would it be through you folks or through the trust that board member Frasier was talking, Fratcher was talking about?
It would be anything prior to May twenty-eighth, it would be through the trust.
Thank you.
May twenty-eighth, correct? Okay, thank you very much, thank you again, both of you for that information. So Robin, I, last two questions that I had, again, that I received, one is there was some concern from the residents when they heard about Queens also looking at working on or bringing back Kahimohala, so they, some of the questions were like, are they, are you moving away from Waihaua? Are you gonna continue to work with Waihaua as well as work on Kahimohala? They're just worried that now that the hospital is back up, that they don't want to lose the hospital again.
No, 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 so there is work to, do work with Kahimohala so we can keep the adolescent Piki here on the island, but nothing is getting diverged over from the work that we are doing with Waihaua, so no plans are changing there.
You promise? No, just kidding, thank you, thank you very much for this.
No, I, I have, it is such a pleasure and so, and we're working really, you know, right now just getting the C T on the inside, so there's a lot of things that we're doing right now and nothing has changed, we're all full force with that.
That's great news, thank you, and the last thing, there was only one concern of the, of the messages I got, and it was a resident who feels that the signage that says, you know, Queens, the Waihaua underneath the Queens Medical Center signage is very small and felt, and I actually went and looked at it and took a photo, and it is actually very small, and so the question was can they put a bigger, where Waihaua is bigger, because it is, the font is actually very small.
I totally agree, it's temporary, waiting for the permanent signage to come in, but thanks for bringing that forward.
Thank you very much, that, I think that's the questions, oh, we have one more question, go ahead.
Are there any updates for renovations or demolitions or construction for the hospital?
Right now, looking at just the permitting, just to get the C T and the additional footprint of the emergency room done, so that's the next permitting and construction that we're gonna do, and then I think when I come back, if I have an update on maybe the long-term care building, I could bring that down.
Thank you.
That's good, great. Okay, I think board members are done with questions at this point, board members virtually, any questions for Queens? Seeing none, community members here in Waihaua, any questions for Queens? Yes, go ahead, if you can go to the microphone and introduce yourself.
My name's Warren Gualdarama. I have a less fortunate brother who went to the emergency room this week and I guess tested for some meth and showed up positive, but was given some stuff to treat him for that and then was released and was released still in a drug psychosis, still very paranoid, ready to run, take off into the street and everything and, and we went through this with Waihaua General for a while. I'm not putting this on you guys, I know you're very taxed, but I'd like to know if there's, shoot, my, my time is very limited because I'm barely holding my own life together, but I'd like to find a way that we can work together to get them on a good path. I, I believe that he probably should have been put on a hold until the psychosis was gone, just for community safety and safety of himself. If we can work out a path or a way to help this, I'd really like to know.
Thank you for bringing that forward, we can't fix things until we hear things like that for the, for the experience and perception. So I would say if you, you could, I would love to hear a little bit more so that I could go back, I don't want to bring his, his name and things here in this board presentation, but the feedback is still valuable when we're hearing things like that on how we can make it better for each patient that comes through, so I would say if we have a patient relations number that people can call when you have experience like that, because the only way to fix it is to know and then see what kind of resources could be given, and if there's still a way to bridge some information over to you and your family, be happy to have my social worker to reach out and get, get that over to you.
I have a lot of social worker connections, but I'm just, oh, yeah, okay, I, I appreciate that, if we could find a way to find somebody to talk to about it, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Robin, I'll get you that information, I'll forward it to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the community here? Any questions from the community virtually? Hearing none, thank you very much, Robin, for joining us tonight with that update.
Thank you so much and thank you for bringing me on early in the, in the program, I have a great evening.
You too, thank you. Okay, board members, we are back on schedule, so item four, monthly reports, calling up Congresswoman Jo Takuta's representative, oh. Okay, thank you, so we are in item four on the, on the monthly reports, so calling up Nicole for Congresswoman Takuta.
Aloha Chair, thank you guys so much for allowing me to be here and give the update, I apologize for our office, we're a little bit behind schedule along getting the written report out to everyone, but that should be sent very shortly. So the update is pretty brief, Rep Takuta introduced legislation that would establish the Lahaina National Heritage Area Act, which would direct the National Park Service to work with local partners to study the suitability of designating Lahaina as a national heritage area. If successful, Lahaina would be the first national heritage area in the state. Rep Takuta recently visited several health centers, including Ko'olaua Health Center and the Queens Medical Center in Waihaua. She also convened several talk story sessions across the district with healthcare providers and other stakeholders to discuss the needs of rural and remote communities. And she introduced a bill to rename the Captain Cook Post Office on Hawaii Island after First Lieutenant John Kuulei Kauhaihaou, a Vietnam combat veteran from Honau. He was killed in action and posthumously awarded the Army's second highest award for valor, the Distinguished Service Cross. The community, yeah, the community project funding requests that were successfully submitted this year can be found on Rep Takuta's website. All fifteen projects are moving along and you can read more about those projects on the website, and I am putting the link in the chat. And I can take back any questions that you might have or try to answer.
Thank you, Nicole, board members, any questions for Representative Takuta's office? Board members virtually, any questions for Representative Takuta's office? Okay, hearing none, community members here, any questions for Takuta's office? Okay, hearing none, virtually, anyone, any questions for Representative Takuta's office? Okay, hearing none, I do have one quick question, it's just something recent that happened, if you don't mind, I'm curious, I'm not sure if it's in the right area, but over the last couple of days, Kauai is actually going through some big brush fires as well right now, and I'm just wondering with all the neighbor islands, because Maui has gone through this, you know, I'm just wondering if Representative is looking at all the islands of what can be done to help, help all of our neighbor islands when we hit this kind of crisis?
Yeah, I think that, you know, that's kind of been something that's been looked at since Lahaina, right? And talks with various folks about, you know, what's, what's needed, how can these things be mitigated, you know, what, what things can there be in place to help people in, in case of this, right? She, I know she's been working on legislation to better help people from natural disasters, and so that is definitely something that's been part of this focus on trying to build back Lahaina is also strengthening all of our, our resources.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Any other questions for Representative's office? Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our US Army representative, and I apologize, we have the wrong name on the agenda.
All right, good evening, everybody, we just have a few announcements from us tonight, starting with the July Job Fair. So US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on July sixteenth, so tomorrow at Radford High School, beginning at eight thirty A M and ending at two P M. This event is open to the public, there will be job offers and provisional, provisional hiring the day of the job fair. Advanced applicants may go to www.himwr.com. Click on the employment banner to learn openings and how to apply online. Walk-ins are also welcomed and should bring two references, proof of ID, social security card, resume or application. The Child Youth Services or C Y S will have openings to consider. For those who work in C Y S, there are a variety of benefits such as retirement, access to all recreation facilities, discounted childcare, training and commissary and P X privileges. Next item we have is the US Army July Training Advisory for Oahu. The Army in Hawaii will continue training on Schofield Barracks with artillery and mortar training beginning thirty-one July to the second of August, day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. If you want to be added to the training advisory list, email usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. Last item we have is the Oahu Draft E I S publication notification. In accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act and the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the Army has published the Oahu Draft Environment the Army has published the Oahu Draft Environmental Impact Statement for Army Training Land Retention of State Lands at Kahuku Training Area, Pohomoho Training Area and Makua Military Reservation. Uh, the 60-day public review period is from June 7th through August 7th. Uh, the public may submit comments during this period in writing via the Oahu EIS Project Website at home dot army dot mil forward slash Hawaii forward slash Oahu EIS. Uh, barring any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, question, yes, go ahead, Joe.
I, I understand there was a, a town hall meeting last week at Lelehua High School regarding the EIS. Are there any more sort of meetings being held?
No, so we had three meetings scheduled. One was on July 9th, one was on the 10th, and then the last one was on the 11th. So there's no, there's no more in-person ones scheduled at this time.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, virtually, any questions? Dean or Sylvia, any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Virtually, virtually, anyone with any questions for our Army representative? Okay, hearing none. I, I do have one question. When you had the, when you had the meeting that Joe just mentioned, by chance, can you give us a, just a quick, like, what popped up? Or what did you hear that was of concern that came up in your most recent meeting at Lelehua, at the, for the public meeting?
Um, so I actually didn't attend those meetings myself, but I can, uh, work to give you a synopsis on, uh, what, what happened at those meetings.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. I'll share with the board. Thank you.
Uh, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So I attended that meeting. I was not able to attend the one at Kahuku and I was not able to attend the one in Waheina. And I can say that Oahu and the community came out in numbers, huge numbers. Lelehua's cafeteria was packed. And I do know that there were little over a hundred speakers. And of everyone that spoke, only one person was, only one person supported the EIS and the majority of the people there spoke about particularly the lands here in Pohomoho, because there is not much use by the Army for training in those particular areas. There, I was amazed at how knowledgeable our community is because there were a number of speakers that brought forth historical documents predating the overthrow of our Queen Liliu' Okalani. And that was in 1893. And there were also a number of speakers that brought forth documents that, um, I'm sorry, that brought forth requests. Some of them were through FOIA requests that have gone unanswered. One gentleman actually made a FOIA back in 2007 and has not yet had a response. So I was very pleased that our community came out and expressed their emotion, uh, expressed their thoughts. And it was, uh, closed out by a nice poolie by Kumuhina and also a very nice, uh, joining of hands. As we do in everything else in Hawaii, we sang Hawaii Aloha and it was, uh, I think it went till just about 11 o'clock. So very nice to see our community coming out to share their mana'o and for a lot of them, their ike, their knowledge about the practices that have gone on, on the lands that once belonged to Hawaii and still do.
Thank you very much, TJ. Appreciate that rundown. Yes, go ahead, Joe.
TJ, can I just ask you, uh, were primarily the questions regarding the EIS or were they mostly regarding possession of the land itself?
It was probably 80, 20 more about the land itself rather than the EIS because I'm not sure if anybody in here or even out there in Zoomland has read the EIS. It's quite a few hundred pages. And there were a few groups, um, not necessarily from our community that had taken the opportunity to break down the EIS. And those questions that came out of the particular sections were submitted as part of written testimony. And of course, the deadline for all testimonies and, uh, comments is August 7th. So I would encourage you, um, if there is something that you would like to share, whether it be an opinion or a question, I would ask that you put it in writing and submit it before August 7th. But there was a good, there were a good number of questions about the EIS. I cannot say that there weren't more questions about the possession of the land, but there were quite a few. Like I said, our community really came out and showed their knowledge. And I know that emotions were high that night, but for the most part, speakers came politely to the mic, introduced themselves and gave their two or three minutes of testimony. So thank you. If you're out there and you attended, whether it be ours or any of the other, uh, meetings, thank you for speaking up.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, TJ. I heard the same as well, that it was actually well organized and it, there was good discussion. I mean, there was, it wasn't, um, it was, yeah, it, but it was, it was discussion and there was a lot of good mana'o going around and kindness. I mean, there was, you know, there was effort to have kind conversations. So thank you very much on that. Okay, and I think-
I'm sorry, Chair, I just wanted to add, while, um, while the opportunities were there for the community to speak out, I did notice, and I spoke to quite a few people after. And, uh, I think the consensus was it gave the community not only a time to voice their opinions, but it gave the community a time to share their emotion for those families and a, a lot of our families like mine that have been on this land for forever. Um, it gave them a chance to share with the Army, uh, I'm gonna screw this up. Magan, Magana, Maganago?
Agonago?
Maganago, right. Colonel?
Sounds good.
Anyway, Mr. Maganago and his, um, his, um, incoming replacement, Ms. Sullivan, they were very respectful. They accepted, a, a lot of the speakers had information that they presented in person to the military and they were very respectful. And they did ask a few questions. So it was a great opportunity for the community to express that emotion and to express the thoughts that for a lot of them, because the leases were given out almost 65 years ago, they weren't around 65 years. So it was a nice opportunity for the military to see and hear from the community that it has impacted. So thank you. I appreciate all the support there that the military did provide that night.
Thank you, TJ. Um, any questions or comments from our board members virtually? Okay, hearing none, any questions from our participants virtually? Okay, hearing none, any questions or comments from our participants here at Hala'Ko? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we go to our Navy representative. Aloha, James.
Aloha, everyone. Uh, Madam Chair, I'm turning over the, uh, a lot of time for the Navy to, uh, Brian Cheplick of the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill for my email, and he'll be giving an update on the, uh, the closure effort. So Brian, over to you.
Uh, thank you very much, Jim. Uh, first of all, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Oh, loud and clear.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, good evening.
Okay, we just spoke too soon. There's no volume at this point.
Give some updates. Before I start my update, I just want to run through a couple of quick logistical, um, updates. All of the information and updates that I'm going to provide tonight are, can be found on the Navy Closure Task Force website and/or the Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facilities Closure Plan website. I have included both of those URLs in the chat to make things a little bit easier for you folks. If you need to find information or you have any other questions. You can also, um, stop me at any time. I have three quick updates, but, um, please feel free to stop me anytime you have, you want to ask a question, uh, while I'm doing my updates. Okay, uh, real quickly, I am happy to say that, and I'm going to do this chronologically since the last meeting. Uh, again, my name is Brian Cheplick. I am the Public Affairs Officer for the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. On June 28th, uh, the Navy Closure Task Force submitted Tank Closure Plan Supplemental Number Three to the EPA and DOH. Uh, that is very significant for us because that means we are well on our way, um, to removing the pipelines and closing, uh, and cleaning the tanks and closing this facility. Uh, the submission actually included, uh, revised, a master schedule, closure, integrated master schedule. It also provided the regulators, EPA and DOH with, uh, facility closure updates. And one other important thing, it did include Phase One of the Closure Site Assessment Work Plan. And I want to point out the reason why that is important because this pretty much lays the foundation, um, for the Navy's long-term remediation efforts, even after the facility is closed. The Navy has a responsibility, an environmental responsibility to revitalize that Red Hill drinking water shaft and to go ahead and remediate that one with a little aquifer. The closure plans all can be, again, uh, can be found on the, uh, Red Hill Closure Plan page. And again, I've included that URL in the chat. Does anybody have any questions on that first update? If not, I'll move into my second one.
Okay, stand by.
Okay, hearing nothing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Stand by, hold on, stand by. It, board members, any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, board members, virtually, any questions on Part One? Okay, proceed, Brian.
Okay, second update, uh, is we put out a Navy Closure Task Force, again, put out, uh, we put out monthly operations updates. Uh, this month's one was pretty robust. Uh, we are in the closure plan phase, uh, of operations. And what that means is we are currently, um, having to, uh, and bear with me, it's a little technical and I'm going to try and, uh, make this so that it's understandable. We have to clean the inside of those tanks. As you folks already know, the Joint Task Force Red Hill has removed all jet fuel, um, from that facility. So no jet fuel is currently sitting over the aquifer. However, what we do have sitting over the aquifer is some residual sludge in the bottom of those tanks. Uh, before we can get contractors and workers into those tanks to remove the sludge and clean the tanks, we have to make it safe for them, which means we have to do initial venting or de-gassing of those tanks. There was a concern that was brought up from the community that, uh, if we're releasing this, what could be called, um, I think some people are saying toxic fumes into, um, the community, there's a concern that, uh, it could possibly, uh, impact the community in a, in a negative way. Those fumes are not top, but what we did was, the request of EPA and DOH was to set up an air quality monitoring, um, uh, data, data reporting, uh, process. And what we're doing is we are, um, 24/7 monitoring, uh, the, when we vent the tanks and release those fumes. We are monitoring 24/7 and putting that, processing that data and placing it on our website for people to see. So that we're ensuring that, um, those, those fumes or those, um, the de-gassing phase doesn't impact the community in a negative way. Uh, the second, uh, part we also have is that I can say Tanks Seven and Eight, uh, after we did that, the de-gas tank, we were able to get contractors in there and they have successfully removed all, uh, the remaining sludge out of Tanks Seven and Eight. And we are now preparing those tanks, um, to what we call is the pressure washing stage. The next two tanks that we have, um, that will move, we'll move into the de-gassing phase, I believe are Tanks, uh, Nine and Ten, if I'm correct. I have to double check on that, but, um, we'll move into the next, the, so while the first two tanks that we moved the sludge, we'll move into the, um, pressure washing stage. We will now move on to the next two tanks and do the same thing we did for Tanks Five and Six, which is the de-gassing and preparing them for the pressure washing stage. Okay, uh, that is my operations update. Uh, does anybody have any questions regarding that update, Madam Chair?
Okay, stand by. Board members here, any questions so far? Hearing none, board members virtually, any questions so far? Okay, hearing none, you can continue, Brian. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last update I have is I have some, um, great news. Uh, the Easy Closure Task Force is, uh, going to be holding a public open house on Wednesday evening, August 21st at the Mo'ona'lu'u Community Center from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Uh, again, that's Mo'ona'lu'u Community Center. The address is 2500 Radford Drive. And that's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and that is open to anybody that wants to come down. We'll be providing updates on the closure process, a long-term remediation, our environmental responsibility. Uh, we'll have subject matter experts on hand and I believe both the Rear Admirals will be on hand. That's Rear Admiral Barnett as well as Rear Admiral Williams, uh, to interact with the public and answer any questions that they may have. And, uh, I think, yeah, that's all I have for this evening, uh, pending any questions or concerns from you folks or the community.
Okay, stand by. Board members, any questions? Okay, virtually, board members, any questions? And virtually, any questions from any participants for our Navy representative? Hearing that, hearing none. Thank you very much. Brian, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Yep. James, you had anything to add? You're good? Oh. Thank you very much. That is good information and update. Thank you. Moving on to our government agency's Board of Water Supply, Nicole. Nicole. Oh, yeah, oh. Okay, another call, Nicole, Board of Water Supply. Okay, moving on to our State Department of Transportation. Juan or Henry, are you available?
Aloha, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Hi, so I'm Fong Yamada and I'm from DOT. Um, and we have some updates on the Oahu Pedestrian Bridge project. I've brought an engineer with me. His name is Andy Hirano. So I'm going to, uh, be passing it on to Andy to get the updates.
Hi, this is Andy Hirano. I'm the, uh, new project manager for the Oahu Pedestrian Bridge. And I wanted to let you folks know that, um, there is some contamination on the agribusiness, um, property that we had to make a mod to have Keywit, which is the design build contractor to do some soil sampling. Uh, they planned to do, uh, starting July 29th, some, uh, grubbing, uh, some site work and to conduct soil sampling in, on the, uh, beginning part of August, which the report should be expected by the end of August. Uh, there were three items that, um, Chairperson, um, Ishikawa requested on drawings of the pedestrian, uh, bridge, the, uh, entry or access points to the walkway. Keywit has not, uh, developed any drawings, uh, since the original proposal for the design build, build contract was submitted. So those are dependent upon the, uh, soil analysis and the topo graphics study that you need to do in order to do, um, design drawings on the walkway. As far as the lighting, Keywit had proposed, uh, 20-foot, uh, lighting standards. It's spaced 100 feet apart along the, the walkway. Uh, there are no further, uh, updated drawings regarding that as well. And you had a third question about, uh, And you had a third question about concerns about the homeless and whether there would be a security station or a security detail at the pedestrian bridge. The Department of Transportation is not planning to have any of those for the project. We asked that if there are any issues to call the Public Affairs Office, the DOT Public Affairs Office, or the Police Department for safety concerns and immediate action. As far as the next public meeting for the project, we anticipate the meeting to be held in September when the design gets started. It's not scheduled yet, and Keywit would be the one to schedule that public hearing. They did submit a right-of-way map that shows the maximum area that they would need to do the construction. And that's still being evaluated and further refined. Are there any questions?
Andy, stand by. We do have questions from our board, starting with Joe.
In regard to designs of the right-of-way on the other side of the river, are adjacent landowners and property operators being invited into these meetings? Or are they working at all with the, the design engineers? Some hearing complaints about nobody knows what's going on, if their land will be protected or what.
Keywit has been in touch with the landowners. The Sisitumbo Hawaii where the bridge would be on that property. They are aware of the project and the potential acquisition of the area that's needed for the bridge. I did contact the police department, so they are aware of the land area that we will be needing in that area. And agribusiness is well aware of the area that is needed for the walkway.
The walkway is only on adjacent to agribusiness land?
It'll be on agribusiness land adjacent to their property line.
And you don't have a date for the September meeting yet?
No, no.
Thanks, Andy.
Any other questions from board members here? Okay, board members virtually, any questions for Andy? Okay, to the public participants, any questions on this matter? Okay, here in Waihaua, any questions from the public on this matter? Stand by, Andy. Someone's going to the mic right now.
My name is Juan Gualdarama, and I've been kind of wondering about the pedestrian bridge and wondering if, I think at one time we used to have some community service officers here, meaning community members who were trained to deal with the public. I'm wondering if maybe that could be put back together to take care of the pedestrian bridge. Maybe people assigned for different times, and if there's a curfew, they could go and lock it up and make sure it's cleared.
Hi, Andy, did you capture that?
Yeah, who has been doing that?
I've heard that one time we did have a few community service officers here that were, just community members trained to deal with the public on certain matters. Just curious if we could try to put something like that together again.
That might be something appropriate for our service group.
Microphone, microphone, microphone.
I'm suggesting that that might be something appropriate for the service groups that are in town, Business Association, Lions, those guys. That might be something I can bring up.
It sounds good. Thank you.
So Andy, you know, this question about security and, and maybe volunteer groups, that was one of the questions that I posed regarding lighting because we, I have and other board members have received concerns about the pedestrian bridge and the lighting in that area, and will there be security? So maybe when you guys have your, your meetings or your discussion, you know, people are wondering, like, who will be monitoring the bridge? Will there be closure hours on the bridge? Or is it 24/7 that they can, people are going to walk back and forth? And if so, who's going to monitor the things that could go on in, in the bridge or on the bridge? The other question that was raised by an individual said that, you know, how do you know that, that there won't be problems on the bridge, meaning people starting to live on the bridge, since that's happening currently on some of our bridges where people are living on or under a bridge? I know this bridge is high, but, you know, individuals can be real creative too. So I'm just wondering if all of this, these type of community concerns are being taken into account as you folks move forward.
I, I think that's a potential problem for any bridge or structure on, on the island. It's not just limited to Waihaua. The plan is, as I know, the, there's no closure and opening on a daily basis. It's just open 24 hours. And the walkway would be turned over to the city to maintain and operate after the project is completed.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I just, you know, a little concerned when you say that, you know, it's like any of the, the bridges. So I'm hoping we can look at something to at least work on the bridge so that we don't have the things that happen at all the bridges, like, like you commented, yes, there are problems on many of our bridges, but since we're building a new bridge, can we put some effort or some thought to how we can protect the community or maintain the bridge? And I am sorry, I'm going to turn, I have someone with their hand up, so I'm going to let that person speak. I think it's Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andy, what I'd like to suggest is that you guys work out, as far as it goes, you know, we've been talking about security, and we do know that that area isn't the best, and especially in the evening, it'll be very, sometimes even scary, you know, just to walk over there right now. But I hope you folks are really looking at lighting, not only from the, from Whitmore Avenue all the way to Kane Street, very bright, make it very highlight, so it's a high, it's high on a pole. So the light beam spreads out. Also, I think you folks might want to even consider putting up emergency call buttons, like how they have it on all our UH campuses or some of the centers around town where they have that blue light for emergency call box in the event perhaps a person feels, you know, eerie or they feel, think somebody's following them, they can push that call button and get some response out there immediately, as well as also like the Transit Center here in Waihaua. They're linked up with a live camera feed to a security company. So you folks might want to consider that to make sure that's put into place to assure the public that they are safe when using this bridge. Thank you.
Now, thank you for the input. We'll address those concerns with the city when we review the design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Andy. Any other questions for DOT, virtually or here in Waihaua?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I just wanted to dovetail off what Dean Harvest was saying because our city resources, especially with HPD in the area, are already very, very strapped. And I would think that if a project is going to get turned over to the city to maintain it, that there should be, talk about it, there should be money in the budget for it. Because although it might be a good idea to have cameras and lighting and an emergency call button, we already know that at any given time in our district, maybe there are eight officers available. And if someone is in the middle of the bridge, walking over, feels like they're in danger, presses the button for assistance, and there are no officers in the area that are able to respond, then all the emergency call buttons are useless. So I think I would really encourage DOT and your project managers to come up with some way to ensure the public safety, because if you don't, you also leave yourself open. And when I say you, I say the city and county, the state DOT, and possibly even the contractors, you leave yourselves open to liability questions and lawsuits of that nature. And again, this is a topic that has been brought up at almost every community meeting and probably at a number of neighborhood boards about securing this pedestrian bridge. Because we live in the community, we know that there are multiple chop shops, there are drug dealers, there are, and, and like you said, every bridge has them. But here in our community, where that area is so dark and in such an area that is not accessed by a lot of people, if something does happen to someone that's using the pedestrian bridge, it could be hours before someone even realizes that harm has been done. Thank you.
And Andy, just to add to that, and I'm going to go to Dean has his hand up, I just want to add to, a little bit to what TJ just said, is that the bridge that's being built, we understand, we've heard about it, and, you know, it's been, it's moving. But the thing is that it's in a residential area. And so that's the difference of some of the other bridges that we have around the island, but this one is going to be or could be, or could have an impact to the residential areas. I think that's why at many of our meetings, this question keeps coming up about the bridge, will it be safe? Will it be secure? And so, and that's why, you know, we keep asking for updates and, and drawings and whatnot, because we want to make sure that this concern is being heard regarding security and safety of our community. So I'm going to turn to Dean because Dean has his hand up. Thank you. Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, if we could or should have, we do it. Society is going to be society no matter what we do to prevent any type of crime. And no matter how many times we beat this against a rock, you know, things will happen, yes. It's not the best area. We know that. We live here. We work here. We play here. But we try and make a living for all of us to be safe. And this could happen anywhere on the island, and it doesn't matter whether you have one call box or no call box. The thing is, is that you have it available for a person who feels the need to call someone. Okay, that's what the purpose of the call box is. Now, it could also be an audible alarm that they trip. It doesn't necessarily mean that HPD is going to be tied up somewhere unavailable because the calls are placed on priority. The calls are placed on priority. When you call 911, they ask you, is this an emergency or not? Making it a priority would be the best thing because you're talking about what's going to happen. If, if they could happen, if it will happen, when it will happen. But yet, we're taking precautions, and that's all we can do as a community board. Take precautions. And as far as it goes for liability, no, the liability does not fall upon DOT. It does not fall upon the contractor. It falls upon us, the society. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions for, or comments for DOT? Go ahead, Joe.
Just really quickly, Fawn or Andy, if, when you have confirmation on this meeting in September regarding the design, could you let this board know when and where so we could at least follow up?
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay, or schedule something with, with Keywit to address this board?
Okay.
Okay, I think we're good for right now, Andy. I think we got questions out to you. We appreciate both you and Fawn providing updates for us, and we appreciate the dialogue. So thank you very much, both of you. Okay, we're going to move on to our residents' concerns section. Any resident, residence concerns or announcements to make here at the Waihaua area? And hearing none, virtually, anyone needing to make an announcement or comment at this point? Okay, thank you, hearing none. Moving on to our presentations, which we had earlier. And so we're going to move on to our reports, starting with Mayor's Office.
Chair, well, Chair and board members and community members, Kevin O'Shea, Mayor's Office. There was a follow-up item from last board meeting regarding 24-hour bus line service for Route 52. And I guess the question was, can Bus 52 be 24 hours? This is due to riders still being at the bus stop after the last bus, which is at 12:30 AM. DTS responded that at this time, there are no plans to extend the span of service to 24 hours for Route 52, which is Honolulu, Millianee, and Haleiwa. However, if more details are provided on the riders and bus stop location, DTS can evaluate the addition of later trips. Route 52's current operating profile does not warrant the allocation of additional resources for 24-hour service. Apparently, the, the bus currently runs from 4:30 AM to 12:45 AM the following day. And ridership is highest from 6:30 AM to 5:30 PM. And in the evening, eastbound ridership drops to a minimal level after 7:30 PM, while westbound ridership drops off significantly after 9:30 PM. So it sounds like the follow-up is, if you can add more information that you can supply or provide to DTS, they'll continue to look at it. Should be great. That's really all I had for follow-ups on my last report. On the way over tonight, I'll just add, I've lived that I stopped by the Avocado and Mango Street Properties. Mango Street looks pretty good. Avocado is, you know, gets good, it gets bad. Lot of rubbish and debris out there. I've taken some photos. I'll pass those along to the Mayor's Chief of Staff and TPP tomorrow when I get back to the office. The other good news is I was reviewing the fiscal year '25 CIP Capital Improvement Budget, and there's $800,000 in the budget for planning and design for road improvements on California. So hopefully that, that helps. And I'm here to respond to any additional questions you have.
Thank you for the report. Board members, any questions? Jessica, go ahead.
I was wondering, on the, with the Queen's Hospital presentation, she said something about building permits, waiting on the building permits.
I heard that.
And, good, because, you know, with the building going up now, not Queen's, but the Civic Center thing, that took two years.
Right.
So maybe a push could be for any permits.
I've got a, I've got a note to send to Don, just that the community was interested in understanding what the status is. Coming from a building background, medical facilities are pretty intense from a permitting and planning perspective. So I don't know what the status is. I'm speculating, but I will follow up with Don on it, just proper note.
Okay, and just to let you know, when I passed by Avocado today, there were six people there that were workers, put it that way.
Yeah, there, there were five that scattered when I pulled up in the city car and one that was sleeping inside. So it may have been the six. And there's a, there's an automobile out the back too that looked like somebody was living there. So again, we'll, I'll follow up with the Chief of Staff. So again, we'll, I'll follow up with the chief of staff.
It got better, and it's gotten worse.
Yeah, it just seems to be.
Okay, any other questions from board members here? Okay, go ahead, TJ.
Thanks for the report, and thanks for driving by Avocado and Mango. Two questions with regard to Mango. Do we know what is happening with the ownership of that lot?
Yeah, so the, the, the current owners apparently have just basically run out of funds, and they're trying to give the property back to the state. That's my understanding. And that process is just gonna take some time.
So in the meantime, who's responsible for securing the property?
Technically, the landowner, you know, the folks that have it under lease.
Okay, and then I just wanted to share with you,
Sure.
because you made a comment about the Mango Street property being a little cleaner, but then.
Looked pretty tidy today compared to last time I was out a month ago.
So Chair, I wanted to just share with everyone here that there have been community members that have taken it upon themselves to go and clean up. I'm sure if you follow the different Wahua groups, you'll see that someone actually posted a group, and I, I forget what the guy's name is, but community members have been going out to that property and cleaning it, because it's, it's just been horrible.
Yeah, it felt, it's very nice.
Yeah, it's, it's clean.
Imperatively speaking.
So thank you. If you're out there in Zoomland, and you were part of the crew that comes out every now and again recently to clean up that area, the first two times I saw them out there, they hauled away, I stopped counting at six truckloads of trash that was removed from there. So thank you very much, community members, for caring enough about our community to help keep it clean, because I know you didn't have to. And we appreciate any support that we can get from the city as far as, you know, maybe helping us with Avocado Street.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members virtually? Dean, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, Kevin. You know, I've been on this board since 2007, and since then, I've been raising this question to get a bus service for the North Shore from Wahua to Kaneohe, and I raise it every so often. And this is the same response they gave me, or gave the board, to go out and get more information. I don't think that's our job as a board member, or our job as a community. The community is asking a service provided to us, the island of Oahu, which we pay the taxes to provide the service, OTS. They are contracted by the city. The city should either tell us, one, you're never gonna get it, two, you're gonna get it, three, now this is the question I'm gonna post to you, sir, and it's gonna be a hard one, but I'd like you to go back and ask OTS, I want all the numbers for all the buses routes that run after from 10:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. That would mean the country C out to Y9, the Everbus, the Hawaii Kai Bus, the Town Buses, all those buses. They're talking about ridership, well, let's see what the ridership is, the numbers on those routes. And then maybe I'll shut up. But until then, there are people, tax-paying members of this, this community, community from the North Shore, community from Kahuku, community from Ka'ava, that sit at bus stops from 10, 10 o'clock at night till 4:00 a.m. when they say the next bus comes around. I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's right. So if you could please.
We'll follow up and get the numbers for you, Dean, but you know, as you could probably understand and appreciate, I can imagine that DTS runs their numbers, they understand what a justified ridership level is and what isn't. And so all they're saying is, if there are folks that are sitting out there at 2:00 in the morning, and there's a group of them, and we need to realign bus service for them, they'll take a look at doing that.
Right, but why?
It's cancer, well, you know, all people always have.
Asking me to go out and get the numbers for them. Can't they make a survey to go out and do it?
I, I don't know the answer to that, Dean, I'll follow up on it.
Exactly. And like I said, this is the same they came back with in 2007 when I first posed this. They went to board for us to go out and get it. And we, we asked North Shore if they could help us with that, and they gave us numbers. And we sent it to OTS, never heard back from them. You know, I know the ridership is gonna be low, because like I said, I used to catch that last bus from, at 10:30 at night from Alamoana Shopping Center to come around the island, because there was no 52 at that time coming up from Alamoana to Wahua direct. So I used to have to go all the way to Kaneohe, around Turtle Bay, and come home, and I'd get home by 1:00 in the morning. So I was one of those riders. And I know it's not a full bus. I know, I think it was no more maybe than about a dozen people. But yet, it gave, meant people of the community a way home after the regular hours. That's all I'm saying. And it doesn't have to run every hour. You know, but just have.
Right, I think we're, I think we're saying the same thing, you know, let's just look at when, what is the demand? What's the highest demand profile? And DTS will look into if they can reschedule the bus accordingly.
Well, I hope they can, because like I said, I've been hearing this response since 2007. Thank you, sir.
Certainly, pleasure.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from community, virtually or here in Wahua? Okay, hearing none, I do have a follow-up, if you don't mind, Kevin.
Of course, Chair.
You know, you mentioned about Avocado Street and Mango Street. I'm just curious, because when this effort came, I want to say about a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago.
A little after.
And we definitely appreciated you hearing us and taking the information to Mayor's Office. The first thing we saw, and everyone got excited about Avocado, was they were building a tile wall or some kind of structure, and everybody thought, okay, they're gonna clean up the area, right? So they clean up the area, you saw all the garbage bags lined up, and it was this, you know, so visually, people thought it's getting cleared. But now we know that they're out of funds. So what happens to that area? Because already, people are living back in the areas that they were told to leave.
Right.
They've put up tarps over that front building, so what, I mean, if, if it's, if it's pending on funding, and they don't have the funding, and we're back at square one.
Yeah, so from the city's perspective, it's pending on progress.
Right.
So under the permit, they've got, you know, a certain amount of time, time window, to get certain aspects of their project done.
Correct.
And if they don't do that, and they're not performing, then the city takes the next step. I was disappointed as well, when I went out there, and the amount of debris, this concrete rubble everywhere.
Yeah.
Appliances all over the place, just really a mess.
Yeah.
And that's not good for, it's not healthy for the community.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll be reporting on that when I get back to the office tomorrow.
Appreciate that. So that's Avocado, then the other one is Mango Street. So as far as I know, when, when it was getting really bad, because we did photos, and I sent you for everything, the next thing that happened is, they did get ahold of the organization that has the property under lease, if you will. That individual is currently helping out at Y9.
Right.
But she was able to bring people in to help clean up the area, they cut the grass and everything, and so it got cleaned up. What happened is, the people who were living, if you will, on that property, they had actually broken from the backside, and they're broken and damaged things, took things. In addition, because of the cleanup, which is a good action, they moved to the opposite side of Mango Street. And so everything was piled up, their carts and everything, along Mango Street, and then along California Avenue, and then by the Eye Center. So we called that in again, and we asked for assistance, and it has been more or less cleaned up. But, but that's, that's a Band-Aid, basically. So the concern is that there is a longstanding, established restaurant there, you know, restaurant and, and entertainment, you know, for musical events and stuff. So they're getting concerned that, you know, that things are gonna move into their parking lot when it shouldn't be. So if we can just keep an eye on that as well to.
Yeah, and, and those, those restaurant operators should call HPD, you know, if they feel that things are starting to encroach in, in their area or impacting their businesses negative way. For sure. Unfortunately, the city, several members of the mayor's cabinet have met with the operator of that, of that organization.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction there. And it's really, hate to say it, but you know, it's a state, more of a state issue, they've gotta resolve that with the LSC. If there are violations, certainly, naturally, the city will get involved. And we continue to keep an eye on it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Just wanted to relay the latest that I heard as well. Okay, I think we're all done. I don't see any other hands up, so I just wanted to say thank you very much, Kevin, for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
Okay, moving on to, moving on to our governor's representative. Okay, governor's representative, last call. Okay, seeing none, moving on to Senator De La Cruz's office.
Hi there. Hi there.
Go ahead.
Hey there, Malakai Burrows, on behalf, on behalf of Senator De La Cruz. First time at this neighborhood board meeting, so thanks for having me. A few updates from Senator De La Cruz's office. I'll start with some legislative updates. The Senate did come together for a special session on June 26th and 27th to confirm some judges, some state judges. So that was on June 27th. And actually, one of the judges was a, I think, a member of the Wahua or Whitmore community, Stephen Nichols. I don't know if anyone's familiar, but he was one of the First Circuit Court Judges that was confirmed. In terms of the vetoes that just came down from the governor's office, I do wanna highlight the biosecurity bills, in particular HB 2619. The funding in that bill was cut essentially in half. A lot of that funding was going towards invasive species responses, namely the coconut rhinoceros beetle, CRB. But the good news is, is that there's still about $10 million left over after the cuts, which is still, you know, a big positive for the Department of Agriculture, who received that funding. So still a lot of money going towards invasive species, and in particular, CRB response. As far as projects, another update, the Lilihua High School admin building, the funds were just released, $18 million, released by Governor Green on July 10th. Those funds were being held in his office, so those are released. So that's definitely a big positive, and the senator's excited about that one. Lastly, the senator did attend a convention this past weekend and week in Washington, DC. It was the National Forum on Education Policy, hosted by the Education Commission of the State, so an organization that, you know, brings together education policy leaders to, you know, discuss the pressing issues surrounding education. Senator De La Cruz did give a presentation alongside Dane Wicker, the Deputy Director of DEBIT, so Department of Business and Economic Development and Tourism, as well as Carlos Penyloza, the Chancellor of Leeward Community College. And really, the presentation was about, you know, the state's efforts to support workforce development in conjunction with supporting the emerging industries, like agriculture, and the, the conjunction between workforce development and, you know, getting students ready to go into these industries that are hoping to be, you know, growing, especially in Wahua Whitmore area. And then, I know I'm probably closing on, close on time, but I did wanna mention that Senator De La Cruz is definitely looking into the Mango Street, 123 Mango Street address, and that property, as it is state land that was leased to, I think it was Alea Bridge, and I think that organization changed their name to Achieve Zero. But we are trying to work with some state agencies to see if the state can get the land back. Senator De La Cruz is definitely concerned about, you know, the state that it's in. So part of the problem is that there's some money owed by that, that service provider to, I think, some financial institutions, like some banks, that they need to get, you know, their finances sorted before the land transfer can happen back to the state. So it's a little messy, but the state is definitely interested in cleaning that area up and getting it back in the state hands. But yeah, that's it for me, and thank you, and any questions, I can try and answer.
Thank you for the update. Board members, any questions? Okay, board members, virtually, any questions for Senator's office? Okay, and what about participants, any community members, questions for Senator's office? And, oh yeah, and back in Wahua, we do have a question for Senator's office.
Sure.
Again, my name's Warren Guadurama, and I'm kinda curious about that Mango Street property. If somebody were able to take over and take care of those bills that they owe, could somebody else take over the building?
Yeah, you know, I, I think the senator is interested in keeping it in state hands. There's, you know, concerns that, you know, if we lease it out to another organization, is the same thing gonna happen? Where if they can't pay the bills, then, you know, we end up in a similar situation. So getting the land back in state hands would, I think, be a good option. And then the state can maybe, you know, lease out to a service provider that could, you know, provide similar services to, you know, homeless or people in need in the area. But yeah, we're definitely interested in getting that site, you know, operational and activated, so it's not, you know, sitting in the way it is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, and, and before we end with you, I, I do have a couple of follow-up questions as well regarding the Mango Street location. It's great if Senator and you folks are looking at, you know, reacquiring that, that property, that would be great. But I, I do wanna remind everyone that one of the problems with that property was the water line. You know, so that's a huge, huge, and that was, that was what held back the previous organization, or two previous organizations, was the thought that they could operate using porta-potties or however it was, but it, it couldn't. So as you folks are looking forward regarding this issue, because it is something within our community, maybe if folks can start looking at putting funding in, so that we can get that area, you know, into order, if you will. Because it, like you said, it's gonna take a while, so maybe in this duration from now for the next year or so, looking at future budgets to include some funding for that property, to put in that water line, so it can be a certified facility.
Definitely, yeah. Yeah, I can take that back to the senator. Yeah, we're aware of the infrastructure, you know, shortfalls with the, the water and sewer not being connected.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, we're definitely aware of that, that big hurdle, because you know, it's definitely expensive, you know, to get that infrastructure up and running.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll take that back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Nice to meet you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Aloha.
Aloha. And I do apologize, I, I misspoke earlier, I jumped over Councilmember Wire's office, I do apologize. Kelly, are you still on? Hi, Kelly.
Hi.
Hi, I'm so sorry about that.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, you're loud and clear.
Okay, okay, yeah, no problem. So Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wire's office. Just a couple updates. The City Council had passed Resolution 24143, which establishes a game room task force. That passed last week. The task force will be composed of five members. One from HPD, one from DPP, one from the prosecuting attorney's office, and then two members that are gonna be appointed by the council. When that comes up, I'll be sure to report back on any updates on this measure. And then also, some of the budget updates, like Mayor's Rep. Uh, and then also some of the budget updates, um, like Mayor's Rep, uh, mentioned. Money has been put in for the California, um, pedestrian improvements. Uh, also the skate park at Wahihua District Park, money has been, um, allocated for the, um, I guess improvements. Also, uh, sorry, hold on one second. Sorry, I, I live next to a fire station. And then some, uh, money has also been allocated for, um, storm drain, um, plans, uh, for the Wahihua Reservoir. Design for the wastewater pump station and facility improvements. Design and construction for the, um, effluent system and storage improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Plan and design for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant and other related infrastructures. That's all the updates that I have for today. Um, if anyone has any questions for Councilmember, I can take them back.
Thank you. Board members, any question for, yes, go ahead, Ben.
For the, the skate park, could you provide more detail about that, the amount of funding and any detail you have? Thank you.
Um, actually, I, I don't. It was kind of lumped together with some other, um, projects, but I can go ahead and get that for you and get it back to you.
Yes, please. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Kelly. Stand by. Another question? Go ahead.
Hi Kelly. I'm assuming somebody gets paid to clean the room that we're in. And I'm looking around and I've seen a ton of cobwebs. I'm seeing a ton of dirt on the new fans or newer fans. Last month, there was, uh, some kind of noises outside and I went to look outside. The screens are so dirty, I could not see outside.
Okay.
So if, if there's not somebody paid to get, to clean this place, that's one thing. But if they're getting paid for it, they're not doing it.
Okay. Um, it was my understanding that there's like a roving maintenance. I don't think that there's a dedicated maintenance person, but I'll look into that and also, um, see what they can do about getting all of that taken care of. Not a problem.
Any other questions from board members here? Okay, board members virtually, any questions for Councilman's office? Okay, hearing none, any questions from the public for Councilmember's office? Here in Wahihua, any questions for Councilmember's office? Okay, Kelly, thank you very much.
No problem. Yes, have a great evening.
You too. Okay, and then we're gonna be calling up Representative Peruso's office. Representative Peruso's office. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to board business, item eight of the agenda. Approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes of Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Do I have a second?
I second.
Kate, we have a first and a second. Any objections for accepting the minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four? All in favor? Okay, all in favor? Do you have your head count? Any opposed? Can't hear anything. Okay, we're.
Okay, so since we all heard people think I'll be here and didn't hear any nays, um, the, the minutes has passed as written. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, chairs report and board actions, call for disclosure by board members. Any meetings that anyone has, have gone to in the past month, please disclose at this point. That you can, anybody here? Yes, go ahead, TJ.
Chair, do I just need to again state that I attended the EIS meeting at Lelehua High School on July eleventh?
Yep, that's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, June and I are both of the Go Lions Club.
Yes. Okay, nope. Okay, thank you very much.
Yo, you got it. I think the camera guy is telling you to pick up the mic. I mean, you're, we're telling everybody to use the mic so it can be recorded. So I think as board members, we need to be mindful of that as much as we can. Thank you, I saw you.
Okay, uh, virtual members, Sylvia and Dean, have you folks, either of you attended any meetings that we, that you need to disclose or events?
None, I.
Oh, Madam Chair, I was there also at, uh, LHS in, uh, the meeting regarding the, uh, land use. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the disclosure.
Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I attended the Wahihua Community Business Association, um, monthly board meeting.
The WCBA, thank you very much for that. Okay, you got it. Okay, good. All right.
I'm sorry, Chair, one more. I'm not sure if I have to. It was out of our district in Halaeva. But I did attend a, a stream maintenance, um, meeting where we looked at all of the different streams, including the ones up here in Wahihua. Uh, no, I'm sorry, that day, we looked at the streams that were fed from waterways in Wahihua that included, um, the city, Team Rubicon, Representative Amy Peruso's office, uh, Kamehameha Schools as the, uh, the landowner and the number of community organized, I mean, uh, community members that have been impacted by the effects of, um, sh- streams and the lack of maintenance for these waterways. It was quite the eye-opener. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And then, what, I'm sorry, this one, right? Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other disclosures virtually or here? Okay, um, then moving on, uh, board members, uh, virtually, please pay attention to this because we are looking for interested board members. The Department of Facility Maintenance, DFM, provides an opportunity for individuals on the board who may be interested in joining the Stormwater and Wastewater Task Force Group. The next meeting will be on Monday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. If interested, if any one person is interested, please let me know so we can submit your name. So again, board members who are here, any of you interested in attending or participating in the Department of Facility Maintenance's, um, Stormwater and Wastewater Task Force Group? Please let me know. Monday is the meeting, July twenty-second.
Chair, is that in person or can that be, can we participate via Zoom?
It doesn't, it didn't say, it didn't say, so I don't know how they've set it up yet.
If we can do it by Zoom, would you mind including my name? I, I won't be able to go into town though.
Okay, we'll find out on that one.
Thank you.
Okay.
The same is truth for me, Chair.
Okay, so TJ and Michelle, anyone else might be interested? And I'm not sure how many. I mean, I don't know if it's just one person or not, but we'll find out.
This is island-well, island-wide concern or, okay?
It's island-wide.
Yeah, then I'm interested.
Okay, then you, so potentially three. Okay, so again, I'm letting you guys know that, um, I don't know how many we can, but we do have three potential nominations to go in. Okay? Um, I'm sorry, Sylvia or Dean interested?
Not at this time.
Okay, Dean, were you interested?
Uh, thank you for offering, but cannot, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, no problems. We do have three names that we can submit. Okay. Moving on, item two, correspondence and distribution. I, those emails I brought up for Queens, so that's covered. Anyone else have correspondence? Hearing none, board actions, questions and vote if necessary on any of the agenda items listed, as well as on any of the following if necessary. A, state legislature and city and county matters. Board members review and report on any legislative city council development projects or any other proposals that could impact our Wahihua Whitmore communities. I, I don't think there's anything we've already discussed, um, during today's meeting, so nothing on that. Wahihua General Hospital, we had an update from Queens. Um, I do have to change that title, that name, so I apologize on that. Committee reports, education, Sylvia, anything to report?
No, not at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, military, no, nothing at this time. Well, I will say one thing, uh, military, we do have, uh, upcoming next month is the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Wahihua Swimming Pool. And the Army will be helping out on that as well. Transportation, Ampo Joe?
Nothing at all.
Okay, um, water, no report. Hawaiian Affairs, Dean, any report from Hawaiian Affairs?
No report, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are coming on the closing bend and for announcements, I'm gonna have Michelle read A. Joe, you can read B, that's quite long, but I'm sure you can do it. June, can you do C and D? And then I'll do the message, um, on E.
A, board meetings. The Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board will be on recess for the month of August, twenty twenty-four. We will resume meetings on Monday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM here at the Wahihua District Parks Holicoa Meeting Room. Please check the Neighborhood Commission Office website for updates.
B, the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Wahihua War Memorial Swimming Pool. August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, at two PM to four PM. The Wahihua Lions Club is hosting the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Wahihua War Memorial Swimming Pool at the Wahihua District Park. The first public swimming pool built in the city or county of Honolulu. The pool was built in memory of those brave young soldiers from Wahihua who served in the four forty-second and hundredth battalions, who lost their lives in the battles at World, of World War Two. This event is open to the public, Saturday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, at two PM to four PM. The Royal Hawaiian Band will be performing at this event. Listed below are the names of the twenty-one Wahihua fallen soldiers listed on the plaque. Outside here are the War Memorial Swimming Pool in nineteen forty-nine. I'll list the names. Masaharu Endo, Chester Fukunaga, Robert Hahn, Harry Hayakawa, Tameo Hiratani, Kiko Chiro, Ikehara, William Erwin, hmm, how do you get in there? Kumho, Iwahiro, Robert Johnson, Kichi Koda, Jerry Yamaguchi, Mitsuhara Kubayama, Daniel Lim, Robert Macaldowney, Wendell Simpson, or Weldon Simpson, Richard Suma, Wesley Swain, Robert Sweet, Yoshiro, Yoshio Tagami, Mitsuo Tanji, and Kazuo Yamashita.
Item C, City People's Open Market, Tuesday, ten AM to eleven AM, Wahihua District Park. Note that the open market is temporarily being held at a parking lot on Kilani Avenue by the swimming pool. Information contacts. All these numbers are preceded with eight oh eight, so I'll just give you the ba- the base number. Uh, City Street Pothole Hotline, seven six eight, seven 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 seven. State Street Pothole, Pothole Hotline, five three six, seven eight five two. Heart Maintain Road Pothole Hotline, five six six, two two nine nine. City Refuge Inspector, seven six eight, five two two zero. Schofield Noise Complaint, six five six, three four eight seven. And a email is, uh, USAGHI, so USAGHI dot com at Gmail or the Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division Public Affairs Office at six five five, four seven five six. Or email, USAGHI dot com, R E L at Gmail dot com.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And in closing, just, uh, the reason I wanted to reach, uh, read item E is because I have a typo. So to the public and to my board members, I apologize. Uh, we are in recess, uh, in October, I mean, in August, recess in August. So we will see you in September. And so please, um, that's a typo on my part, so I apologize. Enjoy a safe and happy end of summer. And again, we'll see you back here for Neighborhood Board number twenty-six in September. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Mahalo.